We always start our meeting with a pledge, and I am going to ask this lovely group from Johnson, if you would all lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, Rockland, will you start us off when we all rise?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Flaherty, who's going to talk to us about our student showcase meeting.
Right. In order to do that, I believe we're going to airplay really quickly to change devices. It's for me, right now. Okay, let's see if it works. Perfect. Okay, we want to welcome some fifth graders and some second graders to visit with the board tonight. We brainstormed on our spotlight, and we thought with 18 days under our belt that you may like to see what we've been doing with iPads and integration with technology in our classroom. We know this is probably no different than what's happening at Moier and at Woodville, but we want you to see, just in a snapshot, in about 10 minutes. We're going to start off with fifth graders, and then we're going to move to a presentation with our second graders as well. So I would like to introduce, and then I want to turn over the presentation to our fifth graders. If I say your name, can you please wave? Our second graders coming around. Charlie Allardine, Sarah Sidon, Rockland Hamm, and William Schilling. And then for our fifth graders, we have Owen McCain, Michelle Barth, Nicholas Proffert, Christopher Bucher, and Tessa Cooper. So, fifth graders, you can start.
Johnson Elementary would like to highlight some of the everyday moments at our school as we use iPads as a tool to enhance learning. Over the past several years, we have been working on critical thinkers, collaborators, and communicators. This school year, iPad has been given us as an advantage while participating in meaningful learning experiences designed for the future.
Here are three screenshots from our fifth grade social studies class. These images show our work as we use OneNote to take notes and collect key terms to study. We also use Flowology to pull documents into OneNote. In addition, the iPad has made it easier for us to work together with partners as we use AirDrop feature often.
Research is constantly taking place at school. These are examples of students becoming innovative designers. They use digital research tools with the iPad to collect the knowledge as they design objects at the club. You can see in the images that the students are using a planning process before the products are actually built. They develop, test, and refine their prototypes.
Being a responsible digital citizen is very important. These students were given several different real-world problems to solve as they were linked to living and learning with technology. These students worked together to research information and data on the iPad. Then they completed the research planning guide and presented their findings to the class via digital system.
Students and teachers have been able to broaden perspectives of the world by easily learning about the cultures on the device. Ms. Coffin's class started an impromptu discussion about countries around the world. Each student then spent a short amount of time researching key facts from various countries. Each student shared this information with the class. Soon, we hope to connect with our others globally. The iPad has allowed us to perform many different tasks at once on a class. We can easily switch from photos to the internet and back to an app to work on a product. Here are two different examples of Pitcollage being used in science to illustrate non-point source information.
This year, we are able to form tech buddies with our younger students. Instead of just working with our students as a reading buddy, we are able to teach them more about their devices and how it can help us as students. We have worked together and practiced iPad features as well as its wiring apps.
Our kindergarten students are staying busy as well. They learned how to use the app ChatterPix to share what they learned about the letters and their sounds. Here is the end product of the letter C created by a student in Ms. Mills' class.
So I'm going to direct you to the screen. Let's see if it'll play. Okay, so the kindergarten student created a recording, and they videotaped over top of that, but it was them singing the actual letter C. Letter C says "k-k-k." So it was something that they did as an end product down there. Great.
Finally, we have Ms. Payne and her second grade students who have shared a quick lesson created by Ms. Payne on NearPod related to learning more about communities.
And I'm circling here. So, fifth graders, if you want to come over here.
You had shared, they brought iPads. They brought them for you. So, William, will you guys share the iPads? You guys have them down, they brought them. Yes, will you give that to someone to use? Charlie, will you give someone yours? He's already done this lesson.
This is a test?
So, Mrs. Payne, my device is actually still circling. So if you want to go on and explain to them and drive it with the devices that they have.
I have to have one that leads it. I can log in on your computer.
I know, but I'm spinning with the rainbow of death.
Just shut it down.
You're in? Oh, we're not in.
Well, you need the lesson from us.
We have to wait for the...
Sorry, technical difficulties. Does anyone have any questions for our fifth grade group of what you just saw on our presentation?
What's your favorite thing you're doing with the iPad right now? A favorite subject, a favorite project that you've done?
Science.
Pollution, I saw pollution. Has it been a good thing to learn? You guys probably all were pretty comfortable anyway, right? Has it been a good thing to be a tech buddy? I like that whole idea. No? You guys are tech buddies to kindergartners? Really? So you guys are teaching kindergarteners? So who are you guys teaching?
Well, reading.
Your reading buddy is more than weird. Wants the code. No, you guys don't take that code. All right. Is that what we have to put in? That's the code you have to put in.
So Sarah, do you want to explain to us what we're doing?
You're doing great.
You're great. Teaching about the community and learning about a couple communities.
Is everybody logged into that?
We are logged in.
Okay, so Sarah, you can go past it then.
Yes.
And then you have your little arrows over there. Now it needs a first name.
And this is a lesson that actually Ms. Payne created for her students. So she went to NearPod and created this, and it is now archived for her.
Yes, you did send. Go ahead and hit the next one for us, Sam.
So what do they need to do? Tell them what they need to do next.
So, we're going to answer a question. What is a community?
So you're going to choose either A or B, right? And you can see that we are making a change up here to see who's responded and has it.
Waiting on you, Jeff.
So we have 100% with the circle. So tell them what they need to do next.
Go to your next screen.
Does where you live change how you live?
So it's not a question.
How communities differ? Let's visit an Auburn's community. You can also move it around.
So then you actually lift it up and move from side to side.
Wow, that's really cool. There's McDonald's on Times Square. There is McDonald's on Times Square. Can I turn all the way around? Just what do they notice about that?
What do you notice about the community?
Lots of people. All right, you can slide them to the next.
The teacher's talking.
Now, types, we think that you noticed about...
Three things you notice about that community.
Rockland has ours up there.
It's you at the top.
You are at the top.
Alphabetically, you're at the top. Or by seniority.
You know what, but William is not. Oh, I'm sorry. So that's why. Well, she's using her iPad, that's why.
I'm Rockland, she put her name in for me.
All right, Sarah, go on. Go to the next one really quickly.
An Auburn area has many tall buildings, is noisy, and buildings is noisy and is very crowded with lots of people living in it. Draw an ad.
Just hypothetical, we'll listen to the test.
Just draw an advertisement on the board.
So we are going to go past. We're moving on, yeah. So then, the rest of this. We are then going to see different communities. So now we're going to rule, and then we'll just skip through. I think you get the point. But now look at that visually. So how is that different from urban?
Oh, I can do that too? Oh, okay.
Okay. So then it's going to ask you to do some of the same kinds of things. Then we've got suburban.
Oh, and this is what?
Except there's an ocean.
You now have a...
One final quiz.
Well, this isn't the quiz. This is just a quick...
So you want to read that to them?
Which type of community do you think you would live in?
Okay, you don't want to go because William's not going to have us to complete.
Which community would you like to live in when you grow up?
Thanks, I appreciate that question.
Everybody said Urban, are you kidding me?
There's your quiz.
They're talking about there.
Sarah, can you click share?
Please? Yes, you can, when they get it all in.
Do you have any questions?
No, but that was pretty awesome.
So my question is for Mrs. Payne. So you control the lesson in this way. So that's nice.
You do control the lesson, and then it helps them to participate more. The types of questions you can put in. They, you know, I know they love to draw, so I put the billboard one in. And I know that they love, you know, one or two little questions and move along. And they can see the little pie chart, and it just keeps them more engaged. But the tour, that was their favorite too, and it's really hard getting her back.
It's hard getting this moved back.
But that's great for kids that like to be active and learn, that way it engages them in that way.
So thumbs up on the iPads. Y'all get a T-shirt. But I'm going to give it to Mrs. Flaherty. But you all get one of our Highlands T-shirts. And you get our school motto.
I already have one.
We're timid. We just get, these are very special because these are only given to students that come and actually present to us. And our motto is rich in tradition and focused on the future. And you guys are definitely focused on the future. So, Sarah, I'm going to give these to you. You guys go out in the hall.
I don't know which sizes are which.
We've got them.
Thank you. I hope you guys are enjoying the iPad as much as the kids are.
It's a little warm up here tonight.
Glad you guys didn't miss any. That would've been embarrassing.
This is the idea of the more of the usual suspects out there before...
There's plenty.
We'll let, we'll let, give it a second for everybody to come in and have a seat.
So what in here, Jerry?
Okay, at this time, I got to your community forum first. Is anybody, does anybody have any... I've opened the floor for the community forum. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, or comments for the school board? Other than the air conditioner's not working from one of our in-board members. All right, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Wissman, who is going to talk about the Highlands renovation.
We're good. Go ahead, James.
We're good. We'll combine the kind of Phase 4 project update with the Phase 4 gymnasium project update. Joe and I met today with John Hodge from Century Construction, their president, to review all remaining outstanding items on those two projects. The last few days and over the weekend, they did make quite a bit of progress on completing the remaining punch list items. We walked through today and kind of agreed on what was left. And for those that John could answer to at that time, he was able to tell us when he anticipated getting that done, although there were a few items that he still needed information back from subcontractors on as to when they would expect to be able to complete the work that was left. He understands that we do not plan on entertaining any applications for payment from them on either of those two projects until these items are completed. So, the statement of "there will be no money forthcoming until the work is done" seems to have lit a little fire underneath them.
Maybe by our October mission.
That is our goal.
All right. But we do need to revise the BG-1 on the gymnasium phase?
We do need to revise that BG-1. As mentioned previously, there's no surprises on this. You're well aware of the changes to the narrative that were required, as well as the financial aspects of this. You've actually already approved the financial numbers on this back, I want to say in March, no, actually July. They needed some clarification on the narrative to include some of the work that was completed under that last change order because it involved part of the circle drive that was redone that was not part of the original BG-1 narrative. So they wanted that wording added. They received that wording, and then they wanted...
A reapproval, basically?
Page 1 and page 2 approved at the same time. So that's all we're asking you to do. Nothing has changed.
That's fine. I need a motion in a second to reapprove the revised BG-1 for the gymnasium project.
So move.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Onto Moier.
The Moier project is going extremely well. Progress has been tremendous this summer and so far this fall. Three stories of steel, some roof decking are up. You can see the definition of the gymnasium, the stage, the cafeteria, some of the store rooms, some of the classrooms. You're starting to be able to tell where those are going to be. Morel and there are some contractors who are making good progress.
Goal is to be under roof by Thanksgiving.
That is the goal. That is the goal. And they feel they're definitely on that timeline at this time.
It looks fantastic.
It really does. From the street, that's just the barrel roof. That Fennel barrel roof. It kind of flows right off the tongue.
It is coming together quite well, and...
You named that wing, did you hear that?
That was to pay for it, Joey.
Everything's for sale, bro.
All right, change proposal 18R2.
18R2 is a change proposal in the amount of $25,268. It is to add a standalone fire alarm system into the mobile village that was created over there. It was a requirement of the state building inspector that we add that over the summer. So we didn't get the paperwork portion of that until just before this meeting. So we do need approval of this in order to send it to the Department of Education.
All right, I need a motion in a second to approve change proposal 18R2.
So move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay. Change order number two.
And then that individual change proposal is coupled with about 18 others, many of which are deductions to the contract, money we're getting back. The total add to the contract would be $30,476.
All right, and for those in the audience that don't understand, we have change proposals, and they roll into a change order. So you have to approve both of them. So a change order contains many change proposals. We have some students in the audience that wanted to explain some stuff. Okay, I need a motion in a second to approve change order number two. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Payback to Morel.
And this month, Morel is asking for $715,462. That is for work completed in the last month as well as materials stored on site. And with the progress they made, we anticipated a rather large payout location this week. A lot of steel represented in that.
Yes. Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post.
Okay, while we're on Moier, Joe, we have the two options here to display that we want to. We have our original floor plan design that we looked at the other afternoon. And then we have a second option that kind of gets to some of the discussion that we had. And maybe we could put those side by side. Can you line them up side by side?
Just shrink the one down. Shrink the one down halfway and open the other one.
I'm not sure that I can, can I open up two at the same time?
Yeah, if you minimize.
Up there in the right corner.
Top right. Wrong way.
You got to shrink the whole five.
Yeah, minimize the screen next to the X.
You're up here?
Right there, there you go.
And reopen the...
Now, just open the other one down.
Open the dragons.
Track it out.
There you go.
I'll shrink that one.
All of my boxes went away.
Only that one ever.
Is that two? That's the new one. That's without all the big circles in the hallway.
We're still keeping all the colors, I see.
Yeah.
Is that going to help us on the budget part of it?
Okay, I still can't find my other one.
It will some, because I made this circle smaller.
And because the corridor doesn't have as much as well.
Let him float the second.
Theory is that the fewer circles there are, the less labor's involved.
So, original plan.
This...
At this point, don't worry about it. As long as we can see the...
Just give us a second, please.
I've been like forcing you to perform under pressure, right Peggy? They're in the second file.
Make that one.
I see what you're saying.
Do you have an organize button?
It's all right.
That's funny. This is the second option.
So you just scroll on down there, Peggy, a little bit, so you can see the whole thing.
So you left in the reading, like in the reading note area right there, you left that color.
I left that, and then like each...
But that's not Terrazzo anyway, correct?
Correct. And then like at each classroom entrance door, I kind of put a little cluster of all five colors. Kept them kind of small, but like, you know, in between the classrooms, it's just nothing but gray. And that was one option, but it does have less circles and less color in it compared to this one here that has a lot more color in it. If you go down. I tried about five more today. Kind of sprinkled throughout, but...
You're done with dots and colors? Did we, did we ask Dr. Labor?
Yes.
You know what Dr. Labor's gonna say, Wes holding his ears.
No, I want to know what Dr. Labor's gonna say.
I love the color, I think the color would make my kids so excited. I'm cheerleader for them every morning and having a building that is exciting and bright would make me not have to be quite so happy every day.
You promise?
You probably be better.
I see a Moyer parent.
There's a Moyer parent and there's an artist here.
I was gonna say, I majored in art college, so of course I'm gonna say...
I mean, I love the color, I just don't want us to get tired of it.
No, I...
So, so...
The examples that you sent were similar to number one.
Yeah, and they weren't.
And I thought that they were really, they weren't overwhelming, so...
Some of the schools had shifted ton of color.
Oh, you thought the offset?
I thought they were overwhelming.
I did too, because they were orange and yellow.
But they also went up, they also went up...
They went up the walls.
Right. Don't look at that though, but I mean, I mean like there were some that...
Just your eyes to the walls.
Wall was painted red and stuff like that, but I mean, we didn't see the... All the ceilings are gonna be white, all the walls are gonna have that gray tile.
I mean, if it's all gray and white, you need some color.
That'll be fine. Are you gonna do the glass, though, in terrazzo?
Yes, because you also have to look at where you want the terrazzo.
I thought we did that already.
Well, that's, that's the question.
Well, we're gonna... That all depends on what the number's gonna be, I guess.
Well...
We definitely, I personally, we want the glass to be in there, though, to make those colors pop out. You talk about the color, because the terrazzo will not be in the current state that it would be in, what he showed us before.
You can throw them down on the floor and let it...
Would not pop out at you, it's not gonna be that, what with the glass in it, it will.
It will, yes.
I know it will.
I think we're concerned about the change order, right, potentially?
Yeah.
So, I mean, don't we, don't we ask and then let them tell us?
We just really, tonight, just wanted the board to be able to see, because we talked about this the other day. We wanted to see what it would look like with the lesser in there, just so you'd have some perspective on that. And then, we need to go to the next step to...
Price it all.
To price it all.
Like, this first one, I thought would be similar to what we had.
It is.
It is.
It is.
And I didn't find that, you find that busy?
I guess I would see it.
But you're above it.
It goes on the wall.
But not the floor.
I agree with John, that first picture of the walls and the color and the price, that was for me.
We will circle back around on this, but this is just, I just want you to have some perspective on the difference in if you did tone it down, what that would do to it.
I guess from a perspective of moving forward, if it comes, the glass, for me, is a deal breaker, you know, we don't want to do that.
I agree.
I just think it's gonna look too dull.
Looks real muddy.
Not gonna look good, it's worth money, so, you know, if it comes back and it's not doable because of the cost again, I think we should have another plan, move too quickly, like maybe you get rid of a color or whatever it takes. But I guess, in order for you to be able to figure out, okay, what's it gonna take to keep the price down.
I can do that. This helps, though, I mean, it would save some direction.
Okay, alright. More to come, more to come.
District facilities plan. And we have... The local planning committee met throughout the spring and devised this draft district facility plan. And we were originally thinking of bringing this to you in May, but we needed to consult the Department of Education on and off throughout the summer about a couple of small points on this. And we finally feel comfortable with their recommendations to the point where we wanted to bring the draft district facility plan as approved by the local planning committee to you. As you can see, it does list all five school centers. It does list Johnson as a transitional, in a transitional status, and that's primarily because that would be our next major project to undertake. In order for that to... The Department of Education was requiring us to have that status for that school. And they've told us that it would not prohibit us from doing any work down there that we feel necessary to improve on the life safety situation at Johnson Elementary.
I don't want people to freak out when they see that word, Woodville was in transitional for a decade.
Yeah, ten years.
So, you know, it just means that our intent is to replace that building.
But the issue really was that we need, that we need clarification on is would they allow us, because the money's not currently there to do this, so would they allow us in the meantime to make improvements on that building? And that's really why we're just now approving this, because it's taken a while to make sure that we had everything in there exactly as it should be, so that we know that we can do that under that, under that heading.
I do want to point out to me, it's, I realize that it's state by square foot, but thirteen million dollars to do a new Johnson Elementary School after what we paid at Woodville and Moyer is ridiculous. I want people to understand, that's not our number, that's a number that we've been given by the state by, based on square foot per dollar square foot. And it's nowhere close to what it will take to replace that building. Correct.
Yes. These documents require to use the state per square footage, the average per square footage cost throughout the state. And we cannot build in Fort Thomas for that amount, it is only substantially more.
That means it's a little bit smaller school than Moyer. And it, and it, also too, that's considering just construction costs, not, not integrity and architecture and all that. So, in reality, Moyer is nineteen, was nineteen million before all of that. So, it begins to get a little close together, we consider a little bit smaller school, but still not, not there.
How many square feet is Moyer gonna be? Do you remember off the top of your head, or Woodville, I'm just curious?
Yeah, it says fifty-eight.
Oh, Woodville's fifty-nine, okay, I see.
Right.
So, the highlights of this, as you can see, our new construction, Johnson Elementary, that would be a completely new building. These are projects that we could envision undertaking if necessary in the next four years. Possibility of increasing some square footage at Woodville by two classrooms. Some additional renovation at both Highlands High School and Highlands Middle School, primarily in those two schools related to renovating their current cafeterias because of increased student population in both buildings. And then, further down, in other capital projects, we still maintain things on there such as the central bus garage, central storage, and potential work at Central Office to get to a total unmet, unmet need of just shy of twenty million dollars. And then, under category five discretionary projects, some work down at Tower Park, which is not part of that unmet need.
Is there anything on the facility plan, Jerry, where they placed the years where they were constructed and then any additions? I don't remember seeing that before. I think at Highlands, it has all the years that it has had.
It's, I think it looks a little more impressive because I went a little more in detail and listed all those out, everything we could document. So, that speaks to the thoroughness, I believe, of Andy Sanderson, Robert M. and Hayson Associates.
Pretty much. So, okay. Alright, does anybody have any additional questions for Jerry on the district facilities plan? Not, I need a motion in a second to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay. Alright, thanks Jerry. Now we need to authorize the resolution of revenue box.
Second.
I thank you, it's Dr. Carmen, and I already gave you a preview on that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Carmen.
Thank you.
Alright, purchase of a John Deere Gator. Thanks, Joe.
Yes, as we discussed in the working session, we would like to recommend the board allow the maintenance department to purchase an additional Gator. We do have, actually, two different sources of funding to offset the cost of that, both from the junior football league and then also from the remaining balance of the It's For The Kids group. So that, the cost of the district on this ends up being around, what, six thousand dollars, probably something like that. And this was, would enable us to do a lot more in terms of snow removal, all the new spaces that we have up there that you really wouldn't want to take a truck on to do.
I need a motion in a second to approve the purchase of the Gator.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay. We must approve our legal counsel.
Pretty straightforward, just like to recommend to the board that we continue to utilize the services of Don Rupert as our district attorney.
Yep.
I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay. Now, onto the working budget.
I have prepared a, or Andy actually has prepared a budget comparison for you, so that you can see there, there aren't a lot of significant changes from the May budget to the actual working budget in September. But the most significant piece really is that, you know, you know, when you get to the September budget, I mean, you know where everything shook out in terms of the previous fiscal year, you know, you paid all the final bills. You know, in real time, what your actual carryover is or fund balance is. And so you can see that our fund balance changed there, it's about seventy-one thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars to the good, which it would have been actually probably even more, but a couple of things. We did some additional things right at the end last year, if you recall, to finish the plaza, particularly as it relates to the landscaping at Highlands, that was, you know, significant expense to the district. And then also too, we did a lot with our network infrastructure in the district, part of which we will recoup, we spent it, we had to pay the bill before July one, or by June thirty of the previous fiscal year, but we will get reimbursed eighty thousand dollars, I believe, Diana Wright. Forty percent of it from KET's money in this fiscal year, so it's a little misleading there. So, in addition to this, so you can almost add eighty thousand dollars to the fund balance, if you think of it in that way. You can see that we added right off the bat fifty thousand of that difference to the contingency, just to increase the contingency just a little bit, which again, is running around, it's healthy, it runs around seven percent, which is, you know, we definitely would not want to go below that as a district. We know now exactly where we stand in terms of the tax rate. In order to generate four percent in additional revenue, the rate actually goes up about three point four cents. So you can see that it's six tenths of a cent there difference from what we projected in the spring, because you don't know that, you don't know, in the springtime, you don't really know how it's gonna work with the assessed value of homes and all of that. So you have to just figure, it takes four cents to raise it, but it really, in this case, it didn't because of property value increases. You know, we projected, you know, our SEAC, you know, basically flat at eight point four million, but what I would say to you about that is this, you know, we knew what the per pupil would be, that was a given. What is a variable there, though, is how many students do you have? And, you know, you are aware that we are up, that we think we're up around thirty or so students probably over last year. So, I don't think there's any question that SEAC will be a little bit better as a result of the additional students, because you, you know, it's like thirty-nine hundred per student, something like that in addition. So, that should be better. Also too, in May, you know, we knew which positions we were adding, all the ones that you see at the bottom, we knew that in May. However, you haven't actually plugged in all the people yet to those positions. So we had individuals who were retiring, and then we were hiring individuals for all those new positions. So, a lot happens there. We speculate on what it will cost to hire an elementary art teacher, but then when you actually hire the person, they may cost less or more than that. In most cases, they usually cost a little less than that. So, the end result of all of that is about ninety-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars in savings compared to what we thought, where we thought we would be in May. And it's because of people retiring, you replace them with people who cost less from a salary perspective than they did. You know, and so it's, we're to the good, and we usually always are in that case for that. All the other things are the same in terms of expenses. We did add an additional seventy-five thousand dollars to the emergency equipment fund. And this is something that, you know, as a board, I think we're gonna need to talk about a little bit going forward. I mean, as we build our capital outlay, you know, we may not, we may get to a point where we don't, you know, we don't really need that there, but I think we need it, but it maybe doesn't need to be categorized as emergency equipment. It was there, if you recall, it's because when we put everything we had into Highlands and then into Moyer, and so we had to set aside some money in case of a HVAC C system or a roof system went out. So, that was sort of an appropriate category for it to be in at the time. But now, if we're thinking about saving towards a future capital project, that's probably not the best place for it to be. So, that's a discussion I think we're gonna have to have going forward, deciding how we want to categorize that money. But right now, I think it's a great thing that you got a half million dollars there that you can use towards, you know, a needed improvement. And then in addition to that, we had the baseball field lease, which, you know, the board has approved since the May budget, which wasn't there before. So the additional ten thousand there. So, those are really the most significant changes. There were a few other things that, you know, we manipulated just a little bit to capture the additional revenue that came in from the increase in the fund balance, but it doesn't amount to more than like twenty thousand dollars spread out throughout the entire budget. So, that's basically the difference from May to now.
So, do you have any questions for Jean? Or Andy?
The equipment really isn't equipment, it's just any type of emergency renovation or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, what we were really worried about at that time, if you remember, we were worried about roof units and things like that. We were really concerned, we, at one point, we thought we were in need of one at Johnson, and it turned out a little better than, than we thought, but, you know...
Well, there's a unit out here, you might want to spend a little bit more.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out.
How did, with the retirement and stuff, how does the sick leave buy back? We're good to go every year on that?
Well, in there, and that's one of the things that's listed at the bottom, there's what, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars set aside for that.
I was curious how that actually plays out.
We actually, that's, that's a conservative estimate, we usually go, you know, one-twenty, one-thirty, you know, and so we save a little money there every year. But, but that being said, while we do that, the flip side is that we have more than enough people who are eligible to retire who could, who could, you know...
Take that out, right.
You know, I mean, you could go bingo and hit that two-fifty in any given year, real easy. It's just, it just doesn't happen, you know. So that's another good reason to keep it there, for sure. I mean, there was a time, if you can remember, before I came here, where the district was in a situation where there wasn't enough money there to pay, you know, for those individuals who...
That was kind of the reason for my question, is how has it been playing out? Because I know that we did have a huge retirement one year, so if we're only about half of that, we're a good change.
Yeah, yeah, we're a good change.
Alright, I need a motion in a second to approve the working budget for sixteen seventeen.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay. Mrs. Webb, district assurances for 2016, one of those things we have to do.
Yes, it is our annual requirement. And you're familiar with this, I'm sure, but every year, in order for us to receive our funds, our federal funds and state funds, we, John and Jean and I have to go through this list of, series of questions and basically saying that we will follow all the guidelines for proper use of those funds. And in order for us to receive that money, we have to submit this. So we have gone through that, we feel very confident that we are doing what we're supposed to be doing, and we just need your approval.
I need a motion in a second to approve the district assurances.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay. Andrew, you might as well stay up there.
Okay.
Unless somebody has board committee update? I don't know if anybody has anything that they need to report or anything. Any of our committees? ACT score reports.
Yes. So, with your materials, you have access to another report, and it's the one that I've traditionally shown up here, but it's not very presentation friendly, so I took that information. It has, has more details in the written report. So I took that information, it has, has more details in the written report, but I took that information and made it in more presentable form. So this is our annual ACT report for the graduating class of twenty sixteen. Um, these are our five-year trends and you can see a couple of things I would point out to you. Um, you know, we had a big jump in number, uh, in that graduating class. So, we went from two hundred and seventeen students, uh, taking the ACT in twenty fifteen to two forty-nine, so a big jump. And along with that, you can see the composite scores in each of the subcategories there. And, um, they, they went up in every single one. And then, another thing to point out is that that composite, the average composite, the state, um, averages twenty. And Highlands was twenty-four point seven, and that's up from twenty-four the year before. So, even with that many students taking it, we still went up. And that's a pretty significant amount when you're looking at, um, when you're looking at the ACT composite. So, very good scores there.
Some of the highest composites we ever did.
Um, that's the highest since I, than I'm aware of, highest ever. Highest in history. Um, and then just some national facts, I think this is kinda interesting. Um, total number of students tested nationally for twenty sixteen, two million and whatever that is, ninety thousand three hundred and forty-two. And the average composite in, in the country is twenty point eight. So we're well above the national average. Part of that, um, it's interesting to note, um, that, you know, Kentucky is one of, I think, eleven states that requires every student to take the ACT. Um, but in, in the country, not every student takes the ACT. So, uh, we're well above that, but we would be well above that anyway. So I think that's interesting.
Well, and, and that's really significant because in those states where not every student takes it.
It's your best and brightest.
It's just your college bound students, not necessarily students with disabilities or, you know, it's, it's just those who are college bound. So that is, that's, that plays into that very significantly, actually.
Right. So very good scores there. Uh, just a reminder on the benchmark scores, remember that's the goal, that students, we want our, all of our students to meet the benchmark in each of the categories, uh, for, for several reasons. One is it's, um, research shows that that's a good predictor of how they will do when they go to college, so it's predictor of college readiness. Um, if they meet the benchmark, um, I've got it in a note up there, there's a fifty percent chance that they'll get a B or higher in the equivalent college class. And a seventy-five percent chance that they'll get a C or higher in that corresponding, uh, college class. And then I've, I've put what those are here. So for English composition, um, if they get an eighteen or above on the ACT English class, then they'll probably get a B or higher, or C or higher, depending on what that is. And then, the other part of that is that they don't have to take remedial classes, which is huge for parents. And, you know, they're not taking classes that they have to pay for, that they don't get credit for. So we want all of our students to meet benchmark, for sure. Uh, college algebra, the benchmark is a twenty-two. Um, social science, that's comparable to the reading test, it's also a twenty-two, and biology, um, is a twenty-three.
Did it change those at all?
Um, the benchmarks, they changed a cou, one of them changed a couple of years ago.
Reading went up and science went down.
Yeah.
They readjusted.
Every few years, they readjust.
So do we know how many schools in, oh, you're gonna tell me, aren't you?
I don't know. How many schools?
In Kentucky actually meet those benchmarks?
I am gonna show you a little bit of that. Yeah, so these, this is the English benchmark, again, a reminder that that's eighteen. So locally, eighty-six percent of our students met that benchmark, which is huge. Um, it's, and it's traditionally the highest one for, not just here, but also in the state. Um, in Kentucky, the whole, the state of Kentucky, fifty-nine percent of students met that benchmark, and nationally, sixty-one percent. So again, that's interesting when you look at that state number and the national number, when you think every student, even students with special needs, take the ACT in Kentucky, but nationally, that's not true. So that's pretty significant. We're well above that. Uh, for math, uh, locally, seventy-one percent of our students met the benchmark, uh, math benchmark, um, compared to thirty-one, only thirty-one percent in the state and forty-one percent nationally. Reading, um, again, well above, locally, sixty-nine percent of our students met the reading benchmark, um, compared to forty percent in the state and forty-four percent nationally. And then the science, uh, sixty-one percent, uh, locally met the benchmark, um, state thirty percent, and nationally thirty-six percent. And then this little chart just shows you, um, the blue is our district and the gray is the state. So it shows you the number of, the percent of students who met all four college benchmarks, which is obviously the goal. Um, so if you look across through there, you can see, um, at the end, we've already covered those other ones, sixty-one percent of our students met all four benchmarks, um, while in the, um, state, only twenty percent. The national percentage is twenty-six percent. Um, and what that translates to for us was far as numbers, and I just put a comparison. So, the number of our students, um, who actually met all four benchmarks, which means that they don't have to take any remedial classes and they're prepared for college, um, in every single subject. Um, the class of twenty fourteen, we had a hundred and six students out of two hundred and eleven, you can see twenty fifteen, and then this year's, uh, class, a hundred and twenty-seven students out of two hundred and forty-nine met all four benchmarks.
Is remedial just for English and math?
Mm-hmm.
It's not for science and social studies, right?
No, mm-mm. It's just reading and math. So, very good numbers. Anybody have any questions?
So what does that say about us nationally if, uh, less than thirty percent meet the benchmarks? That only thirty percent of our kids are ready for college?
You're talking about?
Nationally.
Oh, nationally, yeah. I know, it's really, um, it's interesting to look at.
It's interesting to look at when, when a lot of kids are going to a four-year university and going into debt and they may not be prepared.
Right. Because that's, I mean, obviously what the research shows, if they go to college and they're not ready, a lot of times they do end up dropping out with debt without a degree, which is not what anyone wants.
If their responsibility is that, to make sure they don't waste that money, colleges.
It's all of our, all of our responsibility.
But they want the money.
They do.
That's a whole nother discussion.
Yeah, whole nother discussion, yeah.
Student loans, all that kind of stuff.
Yes.
That's a whole nother discussion for another day. So let's, let's celebrate the good news.
Yes, celebrate the good news, yes.
I didn't mean to be a test.
That's okay, I understand.
I understand. Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Is there any other business before we have to go into executive session? I don't even know if there's, is there any announcements? Oh, Hall of Fame, thank you. I should've thought about that. Um, the Hall of Fame, second year running, is, uh, not this coming weekend, but the next week, in the twenty.
Twenty-third is the game.
Twenty-third is the game and the twenty-fifth is the dinner. Um, and.
Induction.
The big top, thank you. Keith, did you speak up back there? This weekend is the big top and then is the hullabaloo before our next one? So big top is this weekend, Hall of Fame's the next weekend, and the following weekend is hullabaloo. We have lots going on in our district.
He can't talk, but he's, cause he's scored. He said spaghetti dinner on Friday.
Spaghetti dinner is on Friday night, that's correct. And the football game is away and wob. And homecoming is the same weekend as Hall of Fame, so lots going on. Okay, with that, I need a motion and a second to go into executive session.
Send a.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay. Guys, you're all free to leave.